Oh, your phone may approach.
No, it was digital.
No, because my keys is in my truck.
I got an extra copy.
Okay, thank you.
We need to set up a meeting. Set up a meeting.
Did you get this?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I got something for you.
Yeah, I got this. That's something I couldn't read it. I didn't make it because I couldn't see it. I don't have a lot of time. So I just like. I couldn't see it. I can't see it.
Put on your electronic cock and blow it up.
Yeah, I'm having to do that.
All righty. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another meeting of the Eastern City Council. Today is Tuesday, June the 20th, 2023, and the time is 7:01 PM. Before we get off into the meeting, Reverend Williams, please pray. Reverend? Reverend Williams?
That was great. My God, we come all the way to Dean on your desk, but probably just come to say thank you. Perhaps life is more than buying us together, love in the history. As we continue to move this city forward in the name of Jesus.
Amen. All rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Councilmember Wiley. Councilmember Chisholm.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Mayor Protim Howard.
Here.
And for the record, Mayor Wimberly.
Here.
All right, moving right into it. Approval of the agenda?
Some more.
Been moving properly second. Is any discussion? You're in the novel favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have a motion carries. All right, get right off into a presentation, please. Our budget and Michelle, if you could, please state your name for the record and of course, the company you represent.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Michelle Lewis. I'm with Plant Moran. And I am here to talk about the budget, your water rates, and just the overall state of the city at this point. Okay, moving into the general fund. You see there's a trend here. General fund revenues and expenditures over the last 10 years. And as you can see, this current year's budget has. Sorry about that. The current year's budget has your revenues almost equal to expenditures. The presentation that you were given earlier was based on Treasurer Green's previous budgeted numbers. It has been updated to the numbers that you have tonight. So as you can see here, there have been years, especially from 2014 to 2018, where your revenues have exceeded your expenditures. Those were those years that you were really cutting back on expenditures. Since then, your expenditures have been mostly exceeding your revenues. There was a bump up in '21 and '22 due to the federal grants for the CARES Act and the ARPA funding. However, your fund balance at June 30th, again, is another 10-year trend. And this is something we've been talking about for the last four years, and the fund balance is dwindling since 2019. Fiscal year '22, it looks like in the audit, you are going to end up with a positive fund balance. That is because you have $2.4 million of ARPA revenue to stabilize the budget. After '22, you're looking at this current year, your amended budget shows that you're going to exceed your fund balance by $1.38 million. And the fiscal year '24 budget, while the revenues do exceed the expenditures by about $8,000, so you're chipping away just a little bit, it is in a deficit due to the negative starting fund balance. So the question that, you know, we've had to answer the last few years, do we have enough fund balance? Again, while the revenues do exceed the proposed expenditures this current year, the 2024 budget being proposed is a deficit. And what the state of Michigan defines as a deficit is you do not have fund balance at the end of the year. You have a negative fund balance, and that's because of what happened this current year, '22, '23. If it wasn't for the $2.4 million of ARPA funding, the general fund would have run out of fund balance in '22. Removing the ARPA funding at the end of '24, the general fund would have a nearly $4 million budget deficit. Again, the city continues to have a structural deficit. We've talked about this. I know the treasurer's talked about this. You've talked about this, that your costs are exceeding your your revenues, your fixed revenues. So when your fixed operations exceed your fixed revenues, then you are in a structural deficit. You have had these one-time windfalls the last couple of years, which has been great, and you've been able to stay somewhat afloat. It's not sustainable. Obviously, you know that. The cash position at the end of May, the entire city only had 1.5 million of disposable cash. Now, the state does owe you $535,000 for revenue sharing, the statutory portion that has been withheld because of the audit. You also have another 1.4 million coming from regular state shared revenue. So you are going to get another about $2.1 million for revenue sharing. But with your structural deficit, the general fund will run out of cash. We just don't know when. If we look at your other funds' cash, the state has continued to give us the gas and weight tax for the streets. So you do have cash there, but you can't use it, not even to borrow it. The state does owe the water and sewer now $3.1 million for draws and for grants that have been drawn down and are going to be coming very shortly. Plus, there are expenditures that you will be getting reimbursed from the state for about $3.2 million coming up here. When the general fund runs out of money, that's who you'll end up borrowing from in the short run. But what then? Your pension and retiree healthcare funding, your pension is still decently funded based on the state's guidelines. I know you see 62% here, 66%, and you're thinking, doesn't look great to me. But the state says anything over 60% is well-funded. Your OPEB is at 0%, and that has been dwindling, though, as you have changed to the stipend versus retiree healthcare. And then proposed water rate changes. So the combined water and sewer rate increase based on the rate model that we worked through is about 16.8% this year. So you go from about $20 per unit to about $23 per unit. That seems like a lot. I know. A big reason for this is you have a lot of capital outlay planned, which is going to be financed by debt. But the major reason for this is your water loss. Right now, the city is only selling about 52% of the water that you're buying. That's because you don't have working meters. And so you're not getting the readings. It's based on estimates. I know your water and sewer department is working on getting those new meters. And I ran some calculations for the DPW director. The cost of those meters will be recouped in just over a year. So that's huge. But even more, once you do install those new meters, that will help those rate increases in the future to be in the single digits. So even with all of the capital that is proposed to cut that 16% each year to less than 10, and even much less, that's huge. Additionally, you know, if your capital outlay, obviously, the city is doing a lot of that. You have old infrastructure. It needs to be replaced. The city has found a lot of grants, a lot of debt. Of all my clients, the city right now has the most grant funding that any of my clients have for the water department. So kudos to, you know, the DPW director, the Nash, everybody who's working hard to get those grants. Obviously, if you have debt instead of grants, that's incorporated into your water rates. So the more grants you can get, the better. And then I mentioned the older, non-working meters. A system your size, your age, you'd expect to have less than 30% water loss. The calculation I did, I just estimated highest at 30% just to see how fast you would recoup those costs. And that is a huge factor. So the current state, and these are questions to ask yourself as a council. The general fund right now is in a freefall. What can you do about it? The city as a whole is going to run out of cash because of the general fund. The water and sewer infrastructure needs millions of dollars of improvements, including new meters. What can you do about that? I echo Councilman Shaw's comments that you have done so much to bring new businesses in, to try to get the revenue in that you need. It has been tireless. I have seen you, Mayor, go out and try to get new businesses. But it's not enough, unfortunately. Unfortunately, right now, you have to make those hard decisions. And, you know, do we say 2015 is the right level? And to right the ship, probably, but again, you can't. As you mentioned, it's hard to make those sorts of decisions. But to focus on the big dollar changes, personnel, pension, healthcare, those are your big dollars. It is a hard problem to solve. It's something that, as you mentioned, you have to keep on this every three months just to watch the budget, to make sure that you're beating those projections, that you're trying to keep your expenditures down, and just, you know, make some really hard decisions, unfortunately. That is all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Counsel. Been talking about this for four years. It's the same thing, so we have to figure out what we need to do. Now, I know that we have mentioned about looking at a public safety millage. Councilman Shaw had mentioned that quite a few times. Because we know that's what the bulk of our monies is spent on, is public safety. Do we have, I know, Mr. Green, we, you know, talked about the question as it relates to the millage, how much per meal that we could possibly go after? Is that something that, you know, we could possibly even consider?
You can absolutely consider a public safety millage. There's also a Public Act 345 millage for police and fire retirement costs. That one's a little harder to get past because it's easier for people to say, hey, I need police and fire on my streets, than it is to say, I want to pay for these people's retirement. So. It's tough.
Yeah, that's tough.
But absolutely, look into the police and fire, the public safety millage. Absolutely.
Question there.
Yeah, please go ahead, Councilwoman Washington.
I'm not sure I know I asked this question last council meeting. How many meals are we at? Did we get an update on that?
I believe Treasurer Green has those, but you are at your max capacity, it looks like.
Even at our map, are we, how many?
19.
Okay, so this one's at 29, so we had, this is not right there.
Which one?
This one, the last, yeah.
Yep, so some of those are capped millages, some of them are not. So your voted millages for the debt are not capped. Your judgment levies are also not capped. But you can do the public safety millage regardless, though. That's not towards that limit.
I mean, you know, when Michelle was talking about hard decisions, again, you know, the motto in 2015 was, you know, police part-time, basically, you know, and fire, you know, like eight officers in fire, you know. You know, of course, you know, I don't think that's something that we could really, you know, entertain as a community, you know. What we have now is stretched. You know, the only thing that I think that we can possibly entertain is looking at a public safety millage. And that's something that the council would have to get behind, and then, of course, we would have to, you know, really educate our community on what that looks like. Because I know that we can't, as a community, even afford to raise taxes. But at the same time, a decision has to be made. Because it's, you know, really, you know, at the end of the day, when you look at it, if we just continue on going like we're going, and we've, Mr. Green provided you with two sheets, and I know it's kind of small, Mr. Green. I know that people are kind of trying to look at and read them, but Councilman Wiley had asked me over the last three years what cuts we had made, and we looked at over average as it relates to just cuts to the personnel and just other services. It's about 745,000, that the number is here, okay? But, you know, we need to get deeper than that. Talking about what, another, what, 2 million? What you thinking, like another 2 million?
About 2 million, either in cuts or additional revenue and other than a millage, there's no way you're going to just make up $2 million in revenue.
Please go ahead, Counsel.
Two things. I was going to ask first, are there any millages that are coming up that will be falling off soon? Or in the near future?
That I know of. I mean.
I'm sorry, not millages, like levies or anything of that nature that.
So you do have the judgment levy. And those are usually one-year levies. It's hard to say from year to year what will end up on the tax bill with those. But your other millages, I think those are long-term. Even the debt millages, I think we've still got several years on those.
Okay, and then the second question would be, can we just get, I guess, some more detail or expand upon the water meter situation with the upcoming potential new ones? And I know you said it would be paid off within a year or something like that.
Yep, so Director Bivins has information that he'll be taking to you.
We have been working with Mueller, who specializes in MTU, and looking at getting meters from there. We've been looking at it for a couple of months. We've been talking to him. They finally gave me some numbers. I shared them with the mayor and Treasurer and Plant Moran and Vanish. We're just trying to drill down to make sure this is the right system for the city. We know they're US-made. The meters come out of Chicago and Ohio, so we know they're here. Our current meters are made in Ukraine. We all know Ukraine's at war, so we haven't had meters since Ukraine's been at war. So we are, but Mueller is coming here July 17th to do a presentation. But before then, I want to get with the mayor, I'm going to get with the treasurer, I've got with Plant Moran, I got with Vanish. We talked to them till the day. We have some questions to answer. I just want to make sure when they come and do the presentation, it's what we need. I'm not going to make the same like we did with Elster. I want to make sure I get it right, at least 90% right. And the mayor has been very cooperative and working with me on this, because he knows, we've been talking about this for a minute. And we pushing hard, because we understand if I can get these meters, they go have to be financed, because I can't pay for them. They go have to be financed, you know, we're talking on that here, too, because I'm going directly to Mueller. There's no middle person. It's directly with Mueller, you know, and I would like to thank Nurse Express, because they assisted on this. Mr. Tony Robertson, he helped me with this, put this together with the mayor's blessing, because, as you know, I'm tied up in a lot of things, and I needed some help. And they helped me with this, and it's coming together. But come July 17th, there will be a presentation for you guys to see. But we want to make sure it's the right presentation, so we will see it before you.
Just the current estimate, if you don't mind, for the council, the general public.
It's like 3.5 million.
Million.
And we paid 2.6 for the last six, so that's about in the ballpark. But some of the questions we answered today, and talking with Carrie, Eric Tucker, we might could drill that down a little bit. That's what I'm saying. When you see it, it's going to be the final product, because we're going to have discussions back and forth. But it will be coming forth to you on July 17th as a presentation.
And then also, too, we've been working with Senator Poe Hankey as it relates to this and just getting the final numbers and, of course, you know, the presentation overall, so she can present it, see if we can get it into the supplemental budget for the state, meaning that it's infrastructure. We know that the school debt is currently there to be eliminated completely. And hopefully, with this supplemental, it'll be coming up in October, we could get the meters paid for.
And another thing, piggyback off what Michelle said, we had a discussion earlier. The marijuana facilities, this growth, they're driving our usage up because they have to water those plants. So we're looking at dealing with them, too, and with these new meters. Because we have to capture that, too, that capture, you know, they have to pay their fair share, not fair that the citizens have to pay. Because they're driving up with the marijuana.
They have meters in each one of those commercial buildings right now, right?
Sir.
What? So they don't have a meter?
I'm estimating them right now at 300 units.
Oh. Oh, that's pretty good.
Not the three, not the three units, but 300.
Oh, okay, that's pretty good, then. You probably need to keep estimating up.
That's why I said, we trying to drill.
That's actually pretty good.
We trying to drill that down.
Is there a different rate for the commercial?
I can't, illegally, you can't do that. It's going to be the same rate. But I can't put like an oversized meter in there, something that will capture what they're actually using on the floor, because they're using a lot of water in a short period of time. A lot of water, because they have to, I mean, you look at the one on Industrial Drive, that's going to be 22 acres of a growth facility. That's a lot of water.
Yeah, they haven't started yet, though.
No, they haven't, but we got to get ahead of that.
But 300 units is, wow, that's a lot. That's actually pretty good.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just curious about that, because I know, like, the residents, my water bill is astronomical, and I'm about to have to start catching rainwater from my house.
Don't get caught doing that.
Don't get caught doing that. You should hear that, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, you can't catch the rainwater.
I ain't heard nothing.
Oh, you cannot catch the rainwater.
Those little tells that people be having.
Well, that's.
I mean, I'm not saying, I mean, I never know. That's not it.
Y'all team not discussed that.
Okay.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
At least not in front of me and the mayor.
Was any of this taken into consideration when we were going through all the marijuana stuff? Was that, any aspect anyone looked at?
It'd be personal.
As it relates to growth?
No, no.
And I could tell you, no other city did. This is all new to us. But we've had discussions with Glee, but not me, about this. And we all, you know, like Detroit has way more than we.
Three, three, that's a lot. That's a whole lot. Wish we can get it up a little bit more.
What does an oversized meter mean? What does that mean?
So Carrie, would you?
Come up, come up to the mic, Carrie, if you don't mind. She was saying a comparison of a residential meter to an oversized.
Marijuana facility, that you suggested the oversized meter.
So we're looking at a two- or three-inch meter.
What does that mean, in essence? I mean, not knowing.
So down the street at the corner of Trow Bridge and John Daly, 2424 John Daly? So right next, so which is a larger facility than the facility next door. And the facility next door does have a meter, and they're using about 150 units a month. So that's why we estimated
2424.
2424 at 300, because it's about twice the size.
Okay, maybe I'm phrasing my question wrong.
What she's saying is, let me break, let me, hold on, Mr. Bivins. So in our house, what size meter do we have in our house?
Sure, you have a 5/8 inch meter in your house.
So comparatively with a larger meter, how much bigger is that?
So the meter itself?
Yes.
The size?
I guess I want to know what oversized meter means. You're going to put a meter in that's large enough to catch whatever they're sending through. So in essence, a meter that was made for my house will not suffice for a marijuana facility.
So when I say 5/8 inch, I'm talking about the pipe that attaches to your meter.
Okay.
And their meter is going to be a two-inch or three-inch and around that size. So that much more, you know, you have a small pipe, and then their pipe is going to be that large. So the meters are, you know, sized appropriately proportional to the pipe.
Okay, you said you can't charge additional money, additional fees. Is there any type of, I don't know what you would call it, an excise tax or something like that where the marijuana facilities are concerned when it comes to additional fees? Because that's one of the questions we're asked all the time. Will it impact our resources? And apparently, it does.
I don't, I don't.
So we don't think anything like that exists, but we discussed it, and I'm going to check with AWWA, American Water Works Association, because there are sometimes surcharges that you could apply to industries who use more water than some other industries, so.
Okay.
So we're going to look into it. I don't, you know, I can't answer that question, but certainly, we can explore.
That's fine. I found out what I needed to know about that. But I'm just saying that when we go do those planning things, one of the things is this does not impact our resources adversely. And like I said, apparently, that's not going to change.
So one of the other suggestions from other communities who have a lot of grow facilities is that they water at night, when other people aren't using water. And it doesn't affect the peak, which is something that sets your rates with Glee.
Now, do these meters use electricity? Do they use electricity to run the water?
Very minimal. Very minimal. It's mostly run off a battery.
Oh, batteries? Okay, all right. Thank you.
I guess I have a question for you.
Sure.
When you said, under the general fund, you said starting fund would be a deficit. Can you explain that?
Absolutely. So at the end of at the end of 2023, which is the current year that you're in, currently, your amended budget, your expenditures are exceeding your revenues by about $1.5 million. So you're going to eat up that 200 that's sitting there at the end of '22, and then you're going to go negative. Which means at the beginning, July 1st, '23, you're starting with less than zero. You're negative.
Because, see, you know, we get the reports, but we really have not, this whole year, had a budget amendment.
Okay.
So I was looking in my. So I was looking in my budget, of of the of the GL numbers that are going over.
Yep.
I don't know how we can stop that, because it seems to me that um it's hard, but we got to do less. We gotta do less, I mean, sometimes some of these budgets, they operating like we got three million to surplus, and they know that. I mean, we have to start cutting you guys, I mean, we got furlough days, ten percent from us to start. Ten percent from us, furlough days on Fridays, maybe another ten percent, we have to, I mean. I don't wanna do that, I was in the consent agreement, I was here. And it was horrible, it was hard, we lost some people, but he managed to get us up out of that, he might have cut too much or whatever, but. We got out of that.
Right.
But we started operating like we had six million dollars. And we still operating like that, because stuff is is just all over the place, we have to stop. I mean, so the proposal tonight, maybe we have to put a resolution, if that's what you need to do, furlough days, ten percent. We have to, but we have to take it from us first, ten percent pay up. I'm willing to do that. But we have to source some unity, you know what I'm saying, and I'm willing to do that, but we have to take it back to when we was in the consent agreement before. Not as much, but we have to start taking it back there, you know, we need to find out how much gas is going out, how much, you know what I'm saying? People, you know, everything that's gonna hit this general fund. I'm not, you know what I'm saying, we have to, we, but we've been doing, we've been doing this. We've been seeing this for the last eight years, and we not doing it, we not, you know, we hear it, but we not putting it on paper. We have to, we have to tonight, we have to decide what we need to do. We have to, because if we improve this budget tonight, and there's stuff in there that should be coming out, I left my notes at home, but I'm gonna remember. Yes, Mr. Bibbins.
Go ahead, please, just, yeah, please, go ahead.
Uh I understand what Mayor Bochamp is saying, but I would say on behalf of the employees, that's devastating. Cut our salary, that's devastating, and I mean, it would be worse than twenty fifteen, cause I was here.
I mean, we all was here, but what what we gonna do?
I would ask, I would ask if this council seriously considers going out for a millage for public safety? Cause I would vote yes, I'm telling you now, I would vote yes, and I'd be the pavement to get yes vote before you cut employee salaries. Because that's devastating, and this economy unstable in twenty twenty three, get worse in twenty twenty four, we will not survive.
We might not survive, we might not survive this.
We gonna lose employees in dro.
I, we we gonna lose employees, I understand that.
Not not talking about layoffs, and just, I'm talking about people will quit. Because you can't live, we you, we have to be realistic, and we can't live like that.
And I understand that, but what I'm saying is, at some kind of conclusion, I don't want, and I don't want that, I don't want that, like I said.
You're a citizen too.
Right, but I was here, me and Denai was here when we was in that consent agreement, and and you, and there was nothing there pretty. But at the end of the day, if we brought out the cash, we gonna have to start borrowing from you, and that's not a good thing.
And I understand that, I understand.
So we need to figure out something.
Beg of you to push the mileage.
Well, we, if that's what this council wanna do, we need to do something tonight, we just can't. Right, but we, what I'm saying to you, Jaron, is we just can't approve the budget. Without having something down here on paper, because this been doing this for four, for four years, we have the same report. And but I see spending, I see overtime, I see things going out this general fund that we really shouldn't be having done, taking out this general fund. And I think the people here is like, it's not my money, so I'm gonna spend it, but if it was actually our money. We wouldn't be spending like we spending, and and it may be something, I'm looking at this budget, I'm looking at the overage. What I'm saying is, we have to do less, we have to, we have to do less. And it might hurt us at the end, but we have to do something, we just can't move this budget and keep going, and we have nothing concrete. So I'm for the millage, too, before we go that route.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking.
And if and if we can do the millage, will it be on, can it be on this belt that's coming up? I mean, I'm I'm gonna see, I mean, you know, can, if we do it tonight, can it be on the belt?
In November, yes.
Okay, and then we do that, and then, I mean, I do that.
Mayor Bochamp, let me say this too, on behalf of the mayor and the treasurer. Some of the stuff you see in there is 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 bare bone, it's what we are operating on, bare bones. And we have to maintain a certain level of standard for the citizens in the city. But it's bare bone, trust me, and and Mr. Mayor has told me on often occasion, what I do with my department. It speaks for itself, cause we're the water department.
And I, and you don't even got money, but you, but but what I'm saying, you run your department, you run your department.
You didn't hear what he said.
At the end of the day, I'm the water department, and you realize what we do on a day to day. But I do it for the love of this city, and this city gotta keep going.
And that's what we are doing, cause I wouldn't be sitting up here if I didn't.
I believe.
But what I'm saying is, I'm going through each budget line item. But I'm not gonna keep going back, I'm not gonna go back, but anyway, we.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome, but anyway, we need to do something, council. We could go out, we could pass a mill, go for a millage tonight, but we have to do something, we can't keep going like this.
And we have, I mean, we've been cutting like crazy, believe that. And I mean, even with the lighting assessment, I mean, it's just things that we've done, but we haven't done enough, and that's where we're getting at, Mayor Protim, so. You know, I totally hear what you're saying, but you know, for me too, being here in two thousand fifteen, you know, seeing the police department, you know, like. Really at its bare minimum.
Right.
You know, right now, we're just really just kind of finding our footing, you know, and people are, you know, happy to be here, you know. But at the same time, I get it, it's like, what do we do with the end of the day, if we don't have a city to operate?
Okay, so let me give you an example, okay, everybody loves the summer fest, but at the end of the day, we gotta pay our employees to work. Do we have that extra money to do that? That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, okay, I see what you're saying with stuff like that.
Yeah, that's that's what I'm talking about, I mean, some of that stuff we can cut, we have to cut out because of the deficit, that's what I'm saying.
For sure.
I mean, do we have that money to pay our employees?
Right, but we don't use a lot of employees per se, you know.
But the employees that we have, that's overtime that we really don't have to pay, that's what I'm saying.
Right, but you, I think you're kinda getting it convoluted, though, because like even with police, we use auxiliary.
I understand we use auxiliary, but at the end of the day, we still hitting our general fund.
Yeah, yeah, so I totally get what you're saying, so with stuff that we don't necessarily need to do.
Correct, that's what I'm saying, because if I'm a millionaire, I'm gonna spend like a millionaire, if I'm broke, I can't do nothing, but the necessity.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's why I'm asking this body and administration, this is what we.
Yes, ma'am, I totally agree one hundred percent, one hundred percent.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Karen.
Councilman. I I would just like to say this, um, cause it, cause it looks like we reinventing the wheel, okay? Three or four years ago, we talked about, we gotta cut back because of the simple fact is, all this stuff, but did we do that? You see what I'm saying? Did we go all the way back where we should have went? Okay, we didn't do that, okay, we kept trying to run with what we had. Okay, now, and you knew, and you knew everybody sitting here, don't need to think, but you knew we gonna, it gonna catch up with us. Okay, so now I ask, now I didn't caught up with, what she's saying is a hundred percent right, okay? Because first of all, um, I don't think the people would wanna go and. Look at our our fine police department, the fire department doing a great job, and then turn right around. And say, well, we gonna go with a safety value or something like that, and 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 level, and we got a lot of crime in Exeter, whether you wanna know it or not. I mean, you can sit there all day long and say, we we ain't got no crime, we got crime. But we got, we got dedicated officers, the fire department is fighting hard to keep it going. Everybody that's in this room, okay, I won't jump on my, give me a little running room. Everybody in this room know that we could not operate with what we've been operating with. But we refuse to do anything about it, we just gonna keep trying to run and cut here and cut that. Shaw brought up the idea about um. Uh going for uh money for the uh fire, separating the fire and the uh police department. Okay, on their own type of budget and and take it from the general fund, remember that?
Public safety.
We didn't do nothing. See what I'm saying? And I'm just saying this, I'm gonna cut it, cause I can keep going with a lot of things, but like I said, this, we all need to roll our sleeves up. Look at the value of this city and move it forward, okay? A lot of people holler about, we got marijuana places, this and that, they 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 paying their taxes? But the thing about it is, uh, people that got the residence, they should be paying some more taxes, okay? When the last time we had a tax increase? See, now I'm gonna be the, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be the military, I want y'all to jump on me, when the last time this city had a tax increase? You know? Westland had a tax increase, Taylor had a tax increase, Rumulus had a tax increase, when the last time Exeter took a uh. And I just said, and we just kept trying to operate with this, this and that, this and that, when?
And we been getting money from everywhere, believe me.
I I admit, we have got a lot of money.
Which is not gonna sustain us.
Let me finish.
Go ahead.
We got a lot of money from different places, grants, everything that we can get. I dedicate, I dedicated to the people who's out there trying to get the money in here, the stuff we got, been keeping us going, okay? But just like I said, the deadlock is coming. Okay, the deadlock is coming, when the deadlock is here, we know it's here, okay? So right now, uh we met with the s- mayor, the mayor, we met with the state and stuff like that, they even know that we're in a deadlock, okay? So they trying to help us, we trying to help us, we just gotta keep rolling our sleeves up, and we'll get past. We'll get past, we're not gonna lose nothing in Exeter, Exeter is a great place to be, you see what I'm saying? But go back and look at the tax structures, Rumulus, Westland, Taylor, look at the tax structures. But then invest, and I tell you another one, I hate to say this, but I'm gonna say it, okay? Cause I I ain't got long to go anyway, so let me say this, when God, when 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 uh, I think it was Snyder. Said that we need to merge the cities, how many remember that?
Yeah.
Uh, and the first person they picked on was Garden City. And Garden City went out there, what the military, the highest military that ever been been passed out there in Garden City? Or their police department, come on, come on now, don't 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 dive me over there, chief, come on. How much, what was the raise they got for their fire department in 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 Garden City? That's right, that's right, they ain't wanting nothing, that wasn't for nothing, solid date with you, they want their own police department.
Uh, believe me, we've been talking about it for sure.
I'm gonna be quiet, but I, you know, this should have been going a long time ago, we should have been cutting, 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 trying to do what we can do, okay? And I appreciate the mayor, he did a lot of hustling, and go back and look at the books. Not only the mayor, a lot of us sitting here, we did some hustling, we got, we got some money, but it's, it it just ain't enough.
It's not.
Okay, and and what Bibbins talk about the infrastructure is out here trying to fix the roads and stuff, go back to the time when all that was mentioned. Back in 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 twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen and stuff like that, when they had all these roads, the the instructions that we had to do. We didn't, they didn't pay it no attention. So now it hit, now Bibbins got to deal with it, cause it hit. I'm not gonna beat a dead horse, okay, but I'm just saying, we love this city, and if we love it enough, we gonna have to go back and and invest in it, okay? I don't care, you know, you look at everything we got right here, you know, proper decisions that we've made. But I I do not wanna see nobody working in this city underpaid, they don't have to, don't have to. I heard a couple police officers, they stopped by there, and uh they would have a little discussion with me, they were saying, well, you know, I love Exeter. But the little money that I'm making, I can't stay here, I got a family to feed. You see what I'm saying? So we gotta take all that under consideration. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut it right there, but I just.
Got some good people work for us, man.
We got, we got, we got, gotta hold on, we got, we got some very intelligent, good people working in Exeter, okay? But I don't care how long you stay here, folk gonna talk about you to the day they down. This is true, we got some good people in Exeter.
Yeah.
And I'm just saying, what we gotta do, we gotta do what we have to do, yeah.
I really appreciate the position, um as I'm listening to the council as it relates to the public safety, milage. Um you know, us as leaders, of course, you know, we have to make hard decisions at times, you know, but. Going out to, you know, our taxpayers, we really have to be able to, number one, I think Councilman Chisholm asked a very good question. And Treasurer Green, you had mentioned to me that we had had a couple of levies kind of fall off last year. Um, you know, as it relates to some of the judgments that had happened, and it was like a savings for taxes or whatever it is. So I really wish you could do a deep dive on that, and when we come back, you know, for the next meeting, or if you send it out even before on what those were. And then if it's anything, too, Michelle, you guys working together to make sure, if there's anything that's coming off or coming up, and then that way we can justify. You know, if there's something that, you know, we've already been paying already, and then what does that look like? You know, how much is, what, how many, what's the meals that we can go for, how much does the meals cost? You mentioned two things, you mentioned uh public safety, but you also mentioned pension, what's what's the difference in the pension situation? Cause I know that, and and I said this at the last meeting, because we were met with the state, Councilman Chisholm and and Councilman Williams and I, we met with the state. And they had mentioned that we didn't apply for the distressed cities uh grant to fund our pension. But then they told us that we are distressed, but we're actually funded.
Yep.
So it's like, we're distressed, but because we did the right thing by paying our bills and we're funded, we can't get this money.
Exactly.
Right, exactly, so with with that being said, though. With this model, possibly, we're looking at, you know, not being able to pay our pension too, right?
Oh, absolutely, eh eh you're like, I mean, you're obligated by law to pay your pension, so there's that. Um, but at some point, you are going to run out of money.
So is that something that we could, I mean, I know we've been, you know, talking to our lobbyists when we first heard the news about that. And then, of course, uh talking to our representatives at the state level as it relates to that, because again, we are a distressed city, we're designated that way. But we didn't even, we don't qualify because we've actually paid our bills.
Yes.
And that's not fair, really, you know, when you look at it, because you're talking about, it's like, what, three million, something like that, for the pension?
I think it is, I'm not exactly sure on the dollar amount, because.
But even if they did seventy percent of it, from what I'm understanding, it would do at least seventy percent of it. That's a big number.
I have a question where the pension is concerned.
Go ahead, ma'am.
They just, you all just came up with the amount needed to satisfy the pension. Because there were threats of suing the city if they didn't do it, now, if by law, you have to maintain the pension. But you can't get the money unless the pension is maintained, that's a catch twenty two, you're damned if you do, damned if you don't.
Yes, exactly, so.
How do you ameliorate that?
So if you're found in violation, then you'd have to do another judgment levy on your taxes. Because essentially, the pension system would sue you for.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that was the position we've been in for the past couple of years, where the pension is concerned.
Right, yeah, but we paid that a year ago, what are we talking about, you said just pay, that was a year ago, we talking, you talking about.
Well, that's not that long ago, but here, here's the uh. Situation I'm trying to figure out, how do, how do these other cities who's getting this distressed money do it without being sued by?
Okay, I I understand what you're saying. So they have been paying their minimum required. But because of the way they've invested, their investment returns came under what's would produce them to be at the sixty percent level. Um so even though they were paying their contribution, their investments haven't quite done the return that yours have.
So we're getting punished for having good investors too, I I'm confused.
I I know.
Wow, it's crazy.
You're getting punished because you're paying your bills.
You're getting punished because you're paying your bills and you investing your money right.
I mean, we have good investors, we switched to those, I'm on the pension board, so I know these things that are going on here. So this just seems all kinds of wrong, can, we can't sue the state, can we?
I mean, at least, you know, again, from 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 our letterhead, teach the council members, you know, writing your, you know, your 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 governor, writing your, you know.
We, we did one time, uh, this Mayor Hampton was here, the whole council body sent resolution, sent a resolution to the state. So, you know, not just individually, but sending a, with Mayor Council, sending a resolution to our governor. And to all of our collective officials on state level, and as a collective body, united. And, uh, you know, sending that to the state.
Yep, I like that.
So we did that back in, you know, two thousand fifteen.
Just started GoFundMe. All seemed to work.
For real, seriously. Okay.
Now, Mr. Chair, just have a quick.
Please, go ahead.
With the, uh, with the meter system. Now, you may mention that we can pay that off within a year's time.
So, if you cut that water loss in one year, you should be able to make up the revenue that will pay for those meters?
Cause it, it took us some time before when we got those meters, just to pay those off. I think it was, it was about ten years now.
So currently, your water loss, just the extreme amount of water loss that you're having right now? Just cutting that by fifteen percent is going to generate millions of dollars in revenue for the city?
So this, this is something that we can, we can do, JB, right away?
The sooner the better.
Been working on it.
Yeah, cause I'm, yeah, cause I remember asking about that, uh, you know, because of the estimated bills. They mentioned about the three million dollars. I know Nerds Express had talked about them being able to not getting any signals from those meters. So.
Yeah, we bought those meters back in, I think, two thousand and, what?
Yeah, so they don't, they don't. Yeah, that's why I thought it was over ten years, yeah.
Okay.
Fund, yeah, fund the beginning.
Please, that's all I, yes, Mayor Paulson.
Mr. Bibbins, when, uh, we talk about water loss from the meters that's not being read, um, are you, I, is the treasurer, you guys working with these people once? But since we can't get new meters in, are they gonna continue to get estimate bills until we get new meters? So, what would be the advice that we would tell our constituents? If you had, you know, go back to a bill that you, that was actual, and if it's like two hundred and fifty dollars that they should actually be paying that? Or we're gonna be responsi-, are they gonna be responsible for paying up the estimate bills? Once, once it goes actual, and you find out that this water loss, are, are residents gonna be responsible for that?
That's a hard question to answer, cause I would have to talk to Mr. Mayor about that. And I don't wanna say that right now.
Okay.
Until I talk to him.
Okay, cause I do know what.
There's a lot we go into that, because some people just don't have these, cause we don't have these.
Right, right, right.
So, you know, you got it.
Okay, but these are.
I understand what I'm saying, I wanted to say it's both.
Okay, because I know going backwards.
That's something that I got to discuss with him.
Right, when we did have extra meters, when people's meters were messed up and you guys replaced them, and then they got this large amount of bills, but you know, they work with them.
This is a different conversation.
Okay, okay, so. Okay, alright, alright, well.
Hey, okay, Mr. Bibbins.
Dang, Mr. Bibbins, I can't ask you no questions. Shoot, but I'm just, I'm just asking questions that the residents might get, you know.
I think if David was here, he probably would say the same.
Okay, okay, so I'm gonna leave that alone, I ain't, go home, I'm not gonna answer them, I'm gonna. Tori, come on over here.
Oh, no, you're fine.
No, okay, okay.
These are the discussions that we have to have, you know, and it's, it's in love and respect.
Yeah, and, and, and that's another thing, too, when I, I always call him and Daryl, if I'm driving out and see water that's leaking, and this hasn't been raining, please call them. Because sometimes they can't be everywhere at one time, but if I'm out, if I see water, that's, I'm automatically calling somebody. And say, look, y'all need to go out there and look. Huh? No, but seriously, and you, it may sound funny, but every time I'm out and I see something, and it always has been a water main break, that they either knew or didn't know. But I'm asking residents, because that's water loss for us too, uh, when, when water is just draining and we don't know. Okay, that's all I have to say, thank you, Mr. Bibbins.
Alright, anything else? Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you so much.
Alright, moving right into a consent agenda? Just a consent agenda. So, let's, it was a question, I'm sorry, before we get to that, as it relates to the water rates, do we need to approve the water rates? So we need to add that to. How's it, separate? Where is it? Okay, consider approval, let's consider above it, a budget amendment to the water and roads rates. So that wouldn't be a budget amendment, that would be a. Yes. No. Yeah, that's just to consider the budget, yeah, budget amendment to water and road projects, so we need to add an item.
G?
Yes. To approve the water rates. Okay. So what would be the sixteen point eight percent?
Okay, so.
What's the number? Just start thinking, let's see, let's make, let's get it right, give me the number. Okay. Yeah.
You're on the question.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Where, where does that put us, as far as money collected from the residents, you know? Like you expect this big bucket of money, I mean, we're going up almost how much? And this will do what, for what?
So it's twenty-three forty-three, is the new rate.
And we don't know how much money this will bring in collectively?
And it's currently twenty oh six.
It's currently twenty oh six, it's going three dollars up.
Yeah, so, but we don't know what this will do collectively.
You can find out that number, I mean, you gotta average on how much water you, you gain and then, right? So then you just times that, times the three point four three percent, so get that number for me, so you can get it for Councilman Moulah.
As far as revenue? Oh, the increase is sixteen point eight percent. Oh.
You need to get that number, send it back to us, calculate that, and just send it in an email to the council.
I can do that, yeah, I can calculate that and send it to you.
We can let the general public know that as well.
Absolutely.
Okay. Alright, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Alright then.
Have we done the consent agenda yet?
No, ma'am, we're doing it right now, um, approval for the consent agenda, what's your pleasure?
Uh, I have a, some move with the.
You got a second?
Second.
Second, go ahead, discussion, ma'am.
Um, in the, uh, just a correction on the council. It says that I asked about UCI, there is no such place, it's USI, insurance people, I just want to make that correct.
Alright.
I agree with you.
And then, uh, I need to make a correction as well, um, the boards and commissions appointment. That will be for council appointment, which we talked about, for, uh, six.
No, you're talking about. We're talking about the consent agenda.
Okay, my apologies.
Okay. Alright. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, guys. We, we, we still, we're, we're, we're on it, okay, alright. Boards and commissions, what's your, anybody counsel?
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
Um, we have Raymond Rappley on there, but that would not be for District Two. I want to, we appoint, uh, Shirley Hankerson to District Two.
Alright.
We do not have a council appointment for Raymond, I mean, for District, I mean, for the council.
Let's do one at a time, let's do Commissioner Shirley Hankerson, um, you made a motion to reappoint her. Been moved to second, any discussion? You're none of our favorite, signify by saying aye? Aye. Any nays? I just have a motion carries, thank you, Commissioner, for your continued service, alright, your next one, please, ma'am.
Oh, and then, uh, Raymond Rappley, uh, for the council appointment for Parks and Recs.
Okay.
Um, I had the resume sent out, not sure if everyone was able to overview it. But he's been in the community for years and been working with the, uh, youth for a very long time in our community.
Alright.
Some of.
Any discussion on that?
I just have one question, um, yes, I got the resume, but the, um, application, there was no application attached.
I did, he sent the application the same day.
Did you, did, I didn't see it in here.
We'll make sure we forward that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Please. Okay, alright, yep, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? I just have a motion carries, alright, moving into the second reading for the Easter Code ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, real quick, sorry.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir, go ahead. Oh, no, brother, just regarding boards and commissions, I don't have an appointment or anything, but, uh, just talking with different commissioners from the ZBA, and then, of course, the planning commission. Um, in an effort to help for clarity purposes, I did send out a correspondence, so who were on those particular commissions after our cross-reference, um, to the clerk. And I would just implore my colleagues to do the same, so we can update their records correctly. Cause we know there's a discrepancy between the website and what we have here. And I also had asked for a denotation, when we do sometimes, we don't always have persons from our district who wanna be on those boards. But we have someone to fill the vacancy from a different district, and we, you know, Councilor Shaw's done it, and Councilman Williams has asked too, when they cross lines as such. Are you okay with this person being appointed, and it's always okay, but just to make a denotation in our packets and, um, perhaps on the website too. Because when they do expire, and then later on you have somebody coming from that district, it's kinda confusing. Especially when hands change and things of that nature, but just a denotation, so we are all clear, like, okay. For instance, like Councilor Washington just did with Mr. Rappley and Ms. Hankerson. You know, clearing it up, saying Ms. Hankerson's gonna be the District Two appointee, but Mr. Rappley would be the, uh.
Counsel.
Counsel appointee, but we know in the future, that might get lost in the translation or language somewhere. So that's all I, just wanted to, I already sent her the email, she replied, and said thank you for the information. But I just wanted to implore my colleagues, and we have a lot of boards and commissions, and then when we get to that point, sitting up here trying to figure it out. Everybody's lost and trying to find some historical, uh, or institutional knowledge that might not be with us anymore.
That's right.
So, that's all, I just wanted to add that.
Yes, sir, alright, moving right into the second reading. Please go to ordinance, chapter fifty-five, stormwater control. Speak up, please.
Did everyone have a chance to go over the ordinance?
She was just asking if everyone had a chance to go over the ordinance, but go ahead, Mr. Bibbins, please, I'm all for us to proceed.
Oh, yeah, we need to open the public hearing.
Uh, is it a public?
Yep. I make a motion that we open the public hearing.
So.
We have the public hearing.
Oh, this is second reading?
We have the public hearing.
This is the second reading, so there's no public hearing.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's a long night.
It's, it's okay, it's alright, we have some time.
I mean, so we're just asking now that you, uh, for the second reading, uh, basically, this is the ordinance that will be administered by the city of Exeter in-house, in the past, it's been done by Wayne County, by stormwater order, that's me. When the building, uh, when, when the company for us, they wanna, they have to either put in a detention pond or retention pond to capture their rainwater, now that money will come to the city instead of going to Wayne County. Cause we will implement the ordinance and we will enforce it, so that's what we're asking for you to not to approve. So it can go, but Verna has said it get a codified, so it will go into the record, so we can begin to enforce that. And Vinich will be our enforcer, as our engineers, they will go out and do the inspection, and, and, and set up the fees, right? To make sure that money comes up. Anywhere in the city, if it's Wayne County, probably Wayne County will deal with it, so if it's Middle Belt, or Exeter Road, or Michigan Avenue, that would be Wayne County. But for local businesses, it will be the city.
How's that formula as it relates to how much you charge per retention pond and all of that stuff? Is it like a number that you have a set number, it was like two fifty for a permit or something like that, how does that work?
Yes, it's base, uh, there's a base number, and then there's additional fees based on average.
Okay, now we're going to the master schedule, master fee schedule? Okay, so that'll come before the council. Okay. 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 Okay, going right into it then, let's go into new business while they're standing there, item A.
Consider adoption of the proposed amendment to Code of Ordinance, chapter fifty-five, Storm Water Control.
What's your pleasure?
Some movement, Chair, second.
Moving properly, second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? I just have a motion carries. Item B.
Consider approval of budget amendment to water road projects.
Mr. Bibbins, you might as well come off, back up here, just in case, we have any questions for you?
I think, um, the Treasurer, Michelle's gonna address it.
Michelle just left out the, oh, what is she right there, okay, alright, so either one of you guys, okay, alright, what's your?
Some of.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Michelle, Treasurer, what's going on? I mean, we got the information in our package, so, what? Tell, tell us what's, what it is that we're doing as it relates to those amendments, I know that you had mentioned that Mr. Bibbins was gonna do it, so.
I think he's starting a project early, I was supposed to start next year, and the next fiscal year is gonna start this fiscal year.
Act like y'all know what y'all talking about, please, speak on it, so, as it relates to the amendments.
One of the projects that we're doing, is Avondale two, because we ran out of money to complete the project like it should be. We're gonna do an overlay, we're moving from budget money from FY twenty-four to twenty-three. So we can put it out for bid in the next couple of weeks and get the project done this year. Now, questions, wanted requests, and then, the standard, other, our standard budget amendment for the water department for monies that we've had to adjust, and within our department, we just put it on record for council.
Someone said they had a question?
Question, that, that seven hundred sixty-two thousand, what, what, what's that, is that the budget amendment that you're talking about?
Yes.
Alright, Mr. Chair, that's all.
So you got a request for the water part, which is, we're moving money around in our department, and we just put it on the record for council to see.
Right.
It pertains to the projects that I'm doing now, so we're just moving money around, we letting you know where it's going, and, and the purpose of why it's being used.
Okay.
It's within the department, yes.
I just had one question. Okay, so, uh, you moving money around for Avondale, the roads over there, correct?
That's in the roads part.
Okay. Uh, what, what about, uh, Harrison?
Well, we talking about a budget amendment now, we not talking about a project.
Okay, but I'm just saying that that's part of the budget amendment that you made.
No.
No, nothing about Harris.
Nothing about Harris.
You didn't say that that's gonna be put on hold?
No, we don't have no money, Harrison gonna be like twenty-two million.
I'm a gambler.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that, but we put on hold before.
This is a budget amendment, about four hundred eighty-five.
Avondale off, how much is, uh, Avondale, how much was Avondale projected for when we started? Fifteen million. So you have part of it, this, it's, we did in concrete, did in infrastructure and all of that, and to finish it out, you're doing an overlay just so we can get a smooth road.
Smooth road, blacktop.
So then, you know.
Back at twenty-seven, correct.
I understand that part, Mr. Mayor.
Harrison, this is for the budget amendment, but Harrison has not been included in it, because we're trying to get money from. But Harrison, this is for the budget amendment, but Harrison has not been included in it because we're trying to get money from the federal government for that. For Harrison because it's a historic strip.
Alright.
So we're trying to get it to designate that, and then of course.
Houseman, well, that's what I said, it's a town hall meeting. Remember I said the mayor's working on trying to give money for that, cause it's a historical road.
Go ahead, you ain't got the money for him, you talk about it.
No, well, yeah, we've been talking about it, we can't fix it, it's just too much. But we need to do something with it though, we don't do, we gotta do something with Harrison, we need to do a, figure out an overlay or something, we gotta do something, it's turning back into dirt. It is terrible.
Trust me, we talk about it every week.
Okay.
Can you, can you do one thing there, Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Can you take some blacktop and put it on the corner of Harrison right there, turn it into Michigan Avenue? That big hole that people keep running over, can you do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, make that happen next time.
Roll down right now as we speak.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Ayes have a motion carries, item C, please.
Consider approval of the Inkster Fiscal Year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget.
What's your pleasure?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? Alright, any discussion as it relates to that?
Any, okay, I want to know, um, from the treasurer, I know he said that he was maybe moving money around to fit this. Everything that he was moving around, it was in general fund, correct? Because we don't know what fund you took money out of to put into another fund.
I, I didn't take money out of.
Okay, okay, um, now, I'm on the revenue side, we have, um, I'm just wondering, I, I have a lot of questions, and I'm not sure if you guys have a lot of questions on this. I'm not, um, prepared to vote on the budget until I get my questions answered, so I'm not sure with my other colleagues. But I'm looking at some of these revenues, okay, like it's got state revenue marijuana tax, okay, um, put in four hundred thousand dollars. So that's what we are gonna get from them this year, because this la, this, this year budget, budget, it was only like, uh, activities a hundred and fifty-seven thousand. So, I'm looking at this because I'm thinking maybe we taking some too high as revenues that may not, I mean, I know it's estimated.
Leave it down.
I know it's an estimated guess, but by us being in this budget, we gotta kinda like.
Yeah, no, I actually had him to take that down conservatively, I think he had it up to like six hundred and something.
Okay, so he took it down to four hundred?
Right, based off of what the council approved as it relates to retail establishments, we get about fifty thousand each year.
Right, because his activity, activity was only a hundred and fifty-seven, almost a hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
Three retail establishments this year.
Oh, okay, so this is some of the questions that I'm having, um, on this, let me go to the other one. Okay, up under, um, District Court, five, five, four, five, on page three of one oh eight, under revenues. Nothing, it was budgeted for a last budget of a hun, uh, sixteen hundred, they took it up to twenty-seven ninety. But we didn't have any activity for this, this year, so why?
Out of the court?
Correct.
Yeah, that would be something probably the administrator would have to ask, answer to.
I'm, I'm just looking at, um, recommended budgets that we have down here, but some of them, we didn't have any activity there.
I know that we had shaved, like, we had been like, again, we had been shaving, we've been shaving everywhere that we possibly can, and then coming back. You know, even from the judge, and I think she came to the last meeting to speak to, to that, you know? It was something we had took out of her budget that she needed, that we couldn't necessarily touch per se.
Okay.
Um, but that's a question that we can definitely, towards the court administrator, so we can have her answer that, please.
Okay, um, up under business license, are we getting any animal license? Are we getting any revenue from animal license?
Animal license included in, uh, miscellaneous police revenues, comes into our records bureau. So, we'll never have no license, but we only make a hundred and fifty a year, and we probably, five, uh, we probably do a hundred of those a year, and that would probably be about five hundred dollars.
Okay, cause I'm looking at this, and it's saying, uh, up under business license, up under animal license, it's no activity, so, nothing, but.
Probably need to remove that.
They got moved from the clerk's office.
Probably just need to remove that, as a reminder.
I would say, just, just, for, for your certification, with the treasurer and I, our budget this year, we, we went through and tried to get rid of a lot of the G Ls that we aren't using, to try to minimize all the confusion of why we have different G Ls all over the place, so there's quite a few changes in the police budget that, where things need to be put where they needed to be.
Okay.
Like, for instance, operating supplies, could be anything, right, but a lot of it would be like police equipment for new officers and that thing. So we moved some money out of that, put it into the equipment G L where it belongs, and just typed up some things that needed to be typed up, so, that was a, a, a process.
Okay. Um. Okay, I you.
Go ahead.
Yes, I just had a quick question, I know the last time, as referenced earlier, we had met with the state, uh, whoa, I'm sorry, the deputy state treasurer, Kevin Smith. And we had talked about the audit at that time, and they were gonna reach out on our behalf as well. Uh, cause it's kinda hard, you know, we don't have it yet, and they're holding up not only our state share revenues, but they're holding us up and the city as well, who wants to know what the audit looked like and what the findings are, is there any status as of yet of what the audit is?
Well, I've been seeing emails going back and forth from the auditors to Plant Moran and to, um, you know, the state. So, I, I would assume that they're wrapping it up now, cause they know June thirtieth is our deadline.
Right.
So, like, you were in the meeting with the state and everything, so, we're all on the same page, you know, we're just waiting on them to finish things up.
I mean, but that's two point four billion.
I know.
We're not, we're not getting yet.
And I, and I just ask that, cause it would bring, you know, more, um, I guess a definitive answer, more peace of mind to everybody if we actually had the audit. Versus, you know, going forward with a budget, even though it's due at the end of the fiscal year, and then we get the audit after the fact. It's kinda like, you know, working backwards, and I can't say they don't care, cause we're not on that side, but it does appear that way, because like anybody that they're working on for an audit, we paying them. Just like the taxpayers, like, we pay the police, we pay the fire, we expect them to show up when we call, and, 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 and council mayor, we expect y'all to answer the phone when we call. We expect auditors to work in a timely fashion, so, I just wanted to know what the status was on that, because that would bring a peace of mind to this body regarding the budget, if we, you know, had that before us because of them dragging their feet.
I agree totally.
In, in that vein, to follow up what he says, has there been any movement on finding new auditor?
So, yeah, I know that we had talked last time about actually getting the contract from the previous auditor, and then working on doing the R F P for a new auditor. So, we're definitely gonna be bringing that right before you guys, after David goes through it, I know that he would have been able to answer that tonight, but he's, uh, you know, he's not with us tonight. So we'll make sure we follow up with him, to make sure we have some representation here. Heard that. Okay.
I have one more question.
Please, go ahead.
Are we, did we get anything from, um, C D B G grant for this year? I see activity twenty, but is it, it's no recommended budget, so we're not gonna go out for next fiscal year?
Yeah, so, we get like twenty thousand in code enforcement every time, right?
Right.
That's just your s, set number, right? When they redid the formula, you had to go out, you know, now, based off of, you know, like, projects that you have within the community. Then they give us like a set amount of money that they set aside to for us for, uh, demolitions, like, this year, they granted us like three hundred, like three hundred thousand for demo. Like, well, last year, but it lasted like three years. You follow what I'm saying?
So do we have to apply for the grant, or that, are they automatically?
Yeah, no, you have to apply for it.
So we haven't applied for it, then, have we applied for?
Yeah, we, we've applied for all, we, all, we applied for everything.
Okay, cause I'm not showing anything, no activity for this budget, this fiscal year, other than the twenty thousand.
We haven't received, we haven't received it.
Oh.
Because you haven't been awarded it.
Okay.
When you're accounted for it.
So, so, which means if we receive, if we was.
We don't get the twenty thousand regardless, of course.
Okay, so the other ones, it's gonna be another budget amendment, cause it's kinda gonna be on next fiscal year's budget.
Comes in, and one, you know, we, we, we shoot for like one two, one point two million on community development block.
Okay.
But it's based off of projects now.
Okay, and one, one other thing too, I still have a lot of questions on this budget, but I'm not gonna hold everybody up, but, um.
But you're not holding, let me just say that, we gotta continue doing this, and this is what we're supposedly doing all the time anyway.
I want to see our budget amendments quarterly, like we have been getting from years, because we don't have any budget amendments in here for, for a general fund. So we don't, we don't have them.
We're bare bones.
I'm, I'm, but what I'm saying is, we don't have anything, right, right, I'm not, we not amending anything, but in this budget, under revenues and un, under expenditures, peop, I mean, some things have went over. But, we don't have them, so I, I mean, I, I'm listening in here, but every three months, quarterly, we need to have it. Whether it's receiving money or going over, so we know, at, at, so we can have all these things right here, instead of me asking for it all the time.
So it sounds like you just need to come before us treasurer, your report, three, every three months, instead of, I mean, still with the stuff you're sending out every month. Because you sent out the budgets to actuals and all that stuff, and you sent out the reds and the yellows and the losses and all of that, but you need to come before us and actually explain it. And then, as it relates to those amendments, we approved in those amendments, if they are, we don't want amendments. Should, really, is where I operate and understand is every, when I talk to each one of my department heads, you don't have no money. You don't have no money to spend, you, you don't have no amendments, if you're running over, they'll say to me, okay, well, I can use some money out of this line item to still in my approved budget. You follow what I'm saying? But I get what you're saying, you wanna see that, and I, I agree with you.
Right, cause it makes, it makes sense at the end of the day, that I'm, I'm understanding what's going on.
I understand.
And if you are moving something out of one G L number, we still, as council, should know, because if someone asks us that question, none of us can answer it.
I'm, I'ma call it.
Well, I mean, I mean, I see it in our reports, but I shouldn't have to do that, because all the council people may not understand what we understand. So you need to bring it to us as a body. I mean, you giving it to us, and, and, you know, but nobody asks questions, nobody asks questions, and when they do ask questions, they ask individual questions instead of as a body, so, nobody knows what the other one's thinking, as far as our finances.
Well, I mean, Mr. Green's been doing a thorough job at sending you guys, and I've looked, I had to look back at those emails, cause people were saying they weren't receiving them. He's been sending you for the last year, the profits and the loss, the, the green tabs, the red tabs, along with the entire administration and the clerk.
Is this in the Excel format?
Yes.
He's been sending it as a living document, so you can see as you run over is all of that stuff, you know? So it's like, okay, if it's something that you're not understanding, there you go, there you go, we need to have sit down to that, and it's okay to say that.
Cause a lot of it is not above.
I get you.
A lot of it's treasury terms, not our term, I mean, yeah, but the expenditure, revenue expenditure report would tell us every month.
And that's what you get.
What's going over, but what we gonna do about it, we keep getting it, but we still not, what we gonna do about it?
Now, we've sent emails, I've made lists of things that I think are going over and, and sent them out to everybody, okay? And especially the I T department, because, uh, we've asked over and over again, they say they spend money direct, and all we ask for is invoices.
Yeah, no, we cut all, we cut all that out, though, we don't, they don't, they don't spend no money.
Got any invoices, and they're still spending what?
No, well, you said that last year, and we, we don't do that anymore, period.
Where are the invoices?
They don't have any invoices, for what?
What they're spending, they are saying that they're buying direct from their distributor, whoever.
Cut that out.
Okay, then I have another question, the money that we were supposed to get from our, uh, Wayne County Commissioner? It was supposed to be for some sort of, uh, 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 high rise or something, what happened to that money?
For a high rise?
Yeah, he's, uh, some sort of, um.
Oh, you're talking about the immigrant monies that David Kenezic was just speaking on, that didn't have a clue about, yeah, so no, we, we didn't receive any money.
The other thing, where is the money that he said he was gonna give us specifically, that we were only getting portions of it?
Right, so we would get five thousand before we got the whole kit and caboodle, it was eighty-five thousand.
Yeah, and where is that in this budget?
He already sent out the letter to us or whatever, I think it's just a drawdown of when we, you know, basically what we're gonna do with the monies.
But is it in this budget?
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't, it should be projected in the budget, yes, it should be projected in the budget for next year.
Find that?
Which, which, which monies are you?
That's our Wayne County Commissioner. I know the Parks and Rec, with Parks, with Parks and, when he's, the Parks and Recs monies.
We only got like, what you talked, the five thousand that we got for the past, yeah, that was in, that's in the budget under Parks and Rec.
Right, but he's, he's given us the entire eighty-five thousand, so.
We can add, yeah, we can add that in.
Yeah, even though it hasn't come to us yet, what Councilor Wally is saying, that it should be projected, that it is coming in this budget.
Oh, yeah, we can, we can definitely add that in, that'll be to the black for us, so I can put that money in there.
That's what the budget amendment should come in, so we know.
There you go, so that's, it's a great example, what the council, what Mayor Protim just said, with that eighty-five thousand, when it comes in, then we would do a budget amendment to add it to that, as, uh, uh, receive revenues. But then, of course, it's going out for expenditures, because we have to tell them exactly what we're using for.
So, Mr. Mayor or Mr. Treasurer?
Please, go ahead.
The eighty-five thousand, you're talking about projecting, just looking at page forty-nine, and I'm, uh, with that, I see how it says federal grants and it says state grants. Would that be something that would be additionally added called county grants, or?
Okay, have to be. It would have to be.
This is a conservative budget, so those, that eighty-five can still go in there, though, that'd help us out.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but it's going right back out, though.
Yeah, it's going right back out.
So, Mr. Chair, Detroit, yeah, go ahead, I'm just, go ahead, Mayor Protim.
Detroit Wayne Mental Health, uh, grant. Uh, we got, uh, recommended budget twenty-five thousand, but we have no activity for this fiscal year, so where are we getting that money?
Well, that was the, um, that's the summer youth employment, where we typically get that, it's a grant through the police department with Detroit Wayne Mental Health. And we didn't get the money this year, so, you know, we got it last year, and we got it, uh, the year before, but we didn't get it this year, so that's why it's not in there. But we plan to get it next year, though, so.
Plan to get it next year.
Yep.
So, let me ask you this, um, being on how we strapped the cash, and I know Parks and Recs is a different entity. Is it fair, I mean, is it, I mean, we have to have a bad, but balanced budget, but we adding revenue, what if we don't get it? So that means we gonna have to take it away somewhere.
We're not adding any revenue.
I mean, well, it's, it's up under, it's up under revenues that we're gonna get it, but we don't, I mean, we gonna get it for this fiscal, for next fiscal year.
I'm looking at that, what you know?
I know it's an estimated guess, but.
All the twenty-five thousand?
Right, so, wouldn't you?
No, the only reason we didn't get it this year, they just, it was some, something with their office, some reporting issues, why we didn't get it this year, but um, again, that's something that we get reimbursed for, when we pay, pay the teens to work for us. We get that money back, we just was unfortunately didn't get it this year.
Okay, cause I was just wondering.
But it is gonna throw your, yeah, it's gonna throw your bottom line off, Mr. Green, because right here, it says recommended.
No, that's next year, it's gonna be next year's fiscal budget, fiscal year after July one. That's twenty-three, twenty-four.
Oh, got you, yeah, that's okay, so I understand what you're saying.
Reimbursement aspect of that?
Yeah, well, when we hire teens to work through that program, whatever we pay the teens to work, then we get that money reimbursed back.
But not this year?
We didn't, yeah, we didn't get it this year.
Yeah, they didn't fund us this year.
They didn't fund us this year.
That money is just gone, period.
Yeah, we didn't.
They didn't fund us.
They didn't fund us.
Yeah, so, it's not something we can ever count, and when he says reimbursed, I'm thinking we getting paid back for something. And, but we not getting anything, so we're not getting anything paid back or nothing.
We didn't spend it.
Okay.
Yeah, we haven't spent, it would have been in this year's fiscal budget. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Sure. I have one quick, if, if Mr. Green could explain the, because in the budget, we don't have, in this year's budget, we don't have the encumbrance and unencumbrance. Can you tell, or can you explain to us the reasons why and how that would be able to impact?
Well, we talked about trying to eliminate the encumbrance, because an encumbrance is basically just a blanket P O, where money's being reserved. But if we go and create new P Os without, you know, spending the blanket P Os, that's how we've been running over and I've been examining that. So I'm proposing that, you know, when there's a P O, when there's an expenditure, we just submit the P O, then that way we know what's exactly being spent. As opposed to what's going to be spent.
And that's good for us to be able to narrow down, so that we won't have those problems with running over.
Exactly, yep, so we'll just have two columns, we won't be looking at three, we won't be looking at the activity, the encumbrance, and, you know, the budget, we'll just look at the budget and what we spent, and compare to. We'll just look at the budget and what we spent and compare the two.
Very good, Mr. Green, because we, that was brought in, um, some years ago, in our past budgets that we seen that. But yet, we see monies just set there, but, you know, it was just encumbrant, you know? So that's very good to, uh, eliminate that so that we can narrow down, drill down on these expenditures for this upcoming fiscal year.
Yep, and I still will be having them submit blanket P Os just to me personally. That way I'll have the P O and I know how to deduct from that P O, but it won't throw us off in the system anymore.
Very good, sir.
Questions, questions being called for. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any nays? Roll call, please.
Councilman Shaw? Councilman Chisholm? Councilman Watley? Councilman Washington? Councilman Williams? Mayor Protim Howard? I have three, three?
Yes. Motion carries. Item D, please. Item D, please.
Consider approving special land use for a proposed.
Item D.
Consider approving special land use for a proposed drive-through restaurant in the T C D Town Center District at twenty-seven two zero six Michigan Avenue for a Big B Coffee Shop.
What's your pleasure? Just a second. The moving properties, second discussion, please. Jane, go ahead, please.
Yes, so at the last planning commission meeting, the planning commission recommended this special land use be approved for the drive-through restaurant at two seven two zero six, which is formerly the Sports Bar and Grill, um, right there east of Inxter Road on the north side of Michigan Avenue. The front portion of that building has been demolished and they're planning on rebuilding it. There will be two suites, so the Big B will take over one of the suites, and we'll have a drive-through. The site plan, uh, approval was tabled at the planning commission meeting because we were in further discussion with, um, D P S and Finesse over exactly how that traffic should be routed. We've been in discussion with the applicant and they've been amiable, they actually submitted revisions right before the meeting, which is why we tabled that, um, discussion. We don't have any fears that we'll be able to reach an agreement that meets the city's needs and meets the applicant's needs. Um, there's potential to partner with the sports arena to maybe divert some extra traffic if that's needed. But the site plan approval process is still ongoing. Um, this would be contingent upon site plan approval. So if you do vote to approve the special land use, that won't be enacted until they have a site plan that's um, up to the standard that D P S wants to see with that alleyway. I, there was some circulation concern with the alleyway, public alleyway.
Any other? Any other questions?
Was the planning commission recommending we approve it?
That is correct.
Even though you haven't completed your assessment?
They felt confident that the, the use, so the drive-through Big B is suitable for that location. And again, it will be contingent on that site plan being approved. Um, but we have been working with the applicant and D P S. It was a matter of timing when the applicant resubmitted the revised plans for the meeting, um, to actually act upon the approval for the site plan.
Is there some reason it has to be done right this second, or can we wait until we get all of the, uh, confirmations or assurances, or what? Is there a reason for big or not without all of the other attended paperwork we usually get?
That is, uh, up to your discretion. You absolutely can table it. The, uh, item will be coming back up on the agenda at the June twenty-six meeting, so next Monday at the planning commission. So if you were to approve it this evening, if they receive site plan approval at the following meeting on June twenty-sixth, then they would be able to go ahead and start moving forward for a final site plan approval. And that would, that would, uh, expedite their process. I know they wanna get this going, so that's, that's one of the reasons we've decided to move forward with the special land use, so we don't have to wait for a July city council meeting.
Yes, I was actually gonna echo that, uh, what she just said, that, that was the intent, was to go ahead with the special land use, recommended to council so they can move forward with that portion, but we did table the site plans until, uh, the next planning commission meeting, so that that can be, uh, solidified when they come back before us. Other than that, they wouldn't be able to move forward with any of the project until that's done. Because other than that, we have to vote on both the special land use, we'd have to table the special land use and the site plans. Um, and then we'd have to wait until August for it to come back before city council.
So just for point of clarification, the actual coffee shop itself is not a special land use, it's just a drive-through, correct?
That's correct.
I just wanted to say that for the public, so we're all on the same page.
Okay, is there any, um, I guess stipulation or something that this is a special issue or a one-time event, so no precedence is set when people come back and say, you let them do it? You know what I'm saying? As far as putting the horse before the cart, or the cart before the horse? Is there any problem with that? I'm just trying to see any foreseeable, um, issues.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, from my understanding, just because it is, one needs the other, so the site plans needs the special land use. If we table one, or they need both, rather, if you will, if we table one, because they're two separate votes we take, they really can't move forward without both. I think we've done that in the past with other applicants as well, um, but it doesn't permit them to move forward. So even though it did come before us like this, the possibility is there, or the potential that other applicants might fall into this gray area, but it's rare. Uh, even if they do come before and say, well, you did it for them, and it's that, yeah, they're still at our discretion. So you still have a power, and the planning commission does too, depending upon whatever those terms are at that time, when we're talking in the public hearing and talking at the council meeting, it's a case-by-case basis.
Anything else? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any nays? Ayes have it, motion carries. Item E, please.
Consider approval of an offer to purchase one vacant parcel located on the south side of Plum between Bayhand and Meadowdale Avenue in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars by Justice Justin and Jamie Fallon.
Some more, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any nays? Ayes have it, motion carries. Item F, please.
Consider approval of an offer to purchase one vacant parcel located on the south side of Stanford Street between Beach Daily and Meadowdale Streets for one thousand dollars.
Moving properties support, any discussion?
Why are we, um, selling this for a thousand?
This is all the same thing.
Instead of fifteen hundred?
I think, so, so with this, the, the applicant asked us to submit the offer to the council. Um, you know, we told him fifteen hundred, that's what it is. They said, well, still, can you submit our offer? We have to submit, we have to submit their offer.
Suggestions to us.
Exactly. Oh, well, I'm, you know, I, I don't, I, I was gonna, gonna say that, but, you know.
We sh- we shouldn't, we shouldn't negotiate that. We're not real estate agents.
Was this one of the ones that was the older one, or is this one of the ones that came under the new rule?
This is the new rule.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is the new rule. I said the same thing, but I had to submit it because, you know, it's the public property.
No, you submit it because it's our ordinance.
It's an offer.
It's an offer, okay.
Public property, so I had to submit the offer.
Can we ask the motion maker to make an amendment to their motion?
Or you say no? I mean, everybody's up there.
For the discussion, we discussed.
Yeah, we discussing it, so. Yeah, there you go. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any nays? All right, item filled, we'll send it back. All right. Item G, please, thank you.
Item G is to consider approval of an increase in water rates of sixteen point eight percent for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four fiscal year.
For a second?
Second.
Discussion. Here, none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any nays? Ayes have it, motion carries. Yeah, so, uh, I think that would be something, uh, the Mayor Protim was just asking, this relates to, you know, we've been talking about it as it relates to moving forward to look at putting the millage together for public safety for November's ballot. I don't, I think you just, you said it, so if that's the councils, councils, you know, we get consensus from the council, we'll start putting it together to bring back before you.
So, do we, do we have to have a resolution, or we just?
No, we, we, you would need that once we bring the information to you, so we would need to bring the information to you on how much. All that stuff, so we'll make sure we get that ASAP.
I'll get you a date.
Okay, let's get, let's get that ASAP and bring it before, and then, of course, we will probably have a public hearing and all that good stuff. All right, this brings us to public participation. We would ask that as you approach the podium, of course, you state your name for the record, and you have three minutes to address this body when your name is called. Hanif Sabree? Okay, and Hanif did, uh, he, he came in and, and he expressed a community event that they'll be having on June the twenty-fourth at eleven A M to four P M at three six two zero Harrison Street. Vendor spots are available. Contact information is three one three six nine five four six eight six. And that's a business expo on June the twenty-fourth to be held, held on Harrison Street at three six two zero Harrison Street. For movement, Chairman. Well, no, we don't need, this is public, this is public comments, and I know that he wanted that read into the. No, he didn't act, we didn't, it's not, it said it's home, not a special use, it said it's property. Jamie? Do you wanna come and ask your question? I do, I do have it, I can, you know, we can, I think the chief would be able to, if you wanted to ask that question. Okay.
We just moved here. Uh, you brought up something about dog license. Um, in our other city, we always went to city hall to get them. But we come to you with police station? Okay, that's all I needed to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. All right, city clerk? City treasurer? U B W?
Yes, and also, we have two pound hard meetings left. Next Tuesday at seven, and next Thursday at seven at the rec center, so please come out.
All right. Fire chief?
No, sir.
Police chief?
We're gonna be here a minute.
Got, got two seconds.
So, uh, thank you, uh, for the gentleman. June twenty-eighth, eleven A M is Coffee with a Cop at Maria's Coney Island, two seven five four five Cherry Oak. Coffee with a cop at Maria's Coney Island on June twenty-eighth at eleven A M. We'd love to see you all out there. Uh, we have had some great, uh, events in the community over the last few weeks, and as summer ramps up, we'll be getting into, uh, some other things happening. I want to, uh, publicly acknowledge some of my officers that did a, a really, really outstanding job with, uh, discovering a large amount of narcotics in one of the motels, uh, over the past few days. It was a, uh, an incident that occurred in another city, and officers were looking for a suspect, and, uh, during that search, uh, ended up stumbling onto, uh, something that made them even more suspicious and, and they began following up on that, and, uh, once they were able to, uh, get into the room, it was a very sizable, sizable, uh, amount of narcotics and cash. So, uh, I just wanna say that the officers are out there working hard, doing everything they can with the numbers that we have. Uh, again, talking about a public safety millage, I think that it is imperative that we look at that. I think that all of the unions involved, I can't speak for the fire department, but I know that the unions, uh, in, in my agency would probably, uh, uh, really support that. And, uh, we have, uh, continued to, um, turn the tide. We have a number of our officers living in the city that we didn't have before, so while we are short, almost a majority of them at this point live here. And, and that's a great thing as far as I'm concerned. Obviously, you all know, I say it all the time, I'm the first chief to live here in thirty years. Um, it is important to me that, that we make sure that we're able to deliver public safety to the people. Um, Michigan State Police are pulling their investigators out of our building on a full-time basis. They'll still be here to assist with investigations, uh, as it relates to homicides. Wayne County, they're three, four hundred people short. They're not coming to save us right now. I've spoken with the sheriff, he's given us reserves. He's given us all we can, all he can on a daily basis. Today, we've had three sheriff's units in our city. He's got four working the entire county, so three are dedicated here right now. Um, it is a real balancing act to try to keep people answering nine-one-one runs when you have so many other things happening in the city. And, um, it, it is really important that you understand how hard these officers are working. Twelve-hour shifts plus another four hours overtime. I have seven, right now, if, if the budget works out the way it's supposed to, and, and we have, I have seven open positions. I've had between seven and nine throughout the last fiscal year, open positions. So, an, an answer to your question about what, what's going over, yeah, we're going over in overtime, but how much have we not spent on the, the open positions? And obviously, Mr. Green keeps tabs on that, and he does what he needs to do, but I'm saying all that to say that, that when you look at what Detroit Police Department has done, they've knocked us out of the water. Uh, they, they've given their officers raises where they're almost making eighty thousand a year. We gave our officers a raise last year in, in, in a contract that was, I think, a year or two years retro that we, we had to go back, so it expires this year. We're the last, we're, we're either the last or next to the last now, where we used, where we were just at that point, mid-range, but everybody's giving everybody raises. Uh, we understand that. We understand the financial plight in the city, and I'm not gonna stand here and tell you that we need to be making the same thing that Wayne or Westland is paying their officers. Westland's paying their officers, uh, seventy thousand to start. It's, it's absolutely unbelievable where public safety has gone as it relates to cost, and I'm sure the fire chief can, can agree. Um, you know, the economic downturn has devastated emergency, emergency services across the country. It's not just here, it's everywhere. It's making it difficult for us to recruit. Recruiting is a problem. Retention is a problem, because we don't pay what everybody else pays. So any cuts to an agency like ours would be devastating. Uh, it would be devastating on more than one level. I, i- it's, it's just, um, really tough right now with the number of officers that we have, and I, you know, you wanna be transparent with the council, you wanna be transparent with the public, but then you don't wanna tell people how few police officers you have, because they, they're scratching their head and they're crippled and going, really? Um, we don't want them to, to, to come here and, and use that as an opportunity to do what they wanna do. Um, so it has been a lot of partnerships, there's been a lot of, of, of balancing, trying to make this work with what we have. Uh, the civilians in the agency have been a godsend, I mean, the, the four desk off, the four desk personnel that we have, all of those have allowed us to keep most of the officers, uh, on the street. Uh, Mayor Protim asked me specifically, uh, what did we cut, or what have we cut in the past? And I just wanted to tell you that, uh, we cut an administrative sergeant position, we cut a lieutenant position, an executive lieutenant position. Uh, we have cut a community relations officer position, filled it with a civilian. That cut the pension costs for that position. Um, we have cut, uh, tremendously, uh, and, and we're still not finished. Uh, we're still trying to deliver a little bit better than, 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 uh, what we thought in the beginning. We, just before, uh, the last council meeting, or just after the last council meeting, we met with the mayor and the treasurer, we looked over some of the other things that we may be able to work on, uh, as far as, as getting our budget in line with, with trying to save some money for the city. Uh, it's difficult to tell people that you need to save money, but they're not making as much as the people who are five hundred feet down the street doing the same job, but with less calls for service and less violent crime and less issues than what we're dealing with. These officers, uh, today, um, in the, in the last three days, we've had, uh, two dead babies and, and a, uh, uh, an overdose, a natural death, and, uh, and a fifteen-year-old shot. So, in four days, they see too much. They see more than anybody in the, in, in this whole area seat. And for them to have to deal with the conversation even of lowering their pay ten percent, fifteen percent, twenty percent, two percent, is more than it needs to be. It's really unacceptable, and it's frustrating to be the chief of police in a city where you have tremendous potential. There's so much potential in the city, so many things that can happen. The businesses that could come here, they don't want to come here. And I'm gonna take my chief badge off for a minute, I'm gonna put on my resident hat for a second, and I'm gonna say that this, this performance by this council has been less than stellar, and I like all of you, but we have to work together. It's, it's, it's outrageous. It's outrageous. When you wake up in the morning and you try to figure out what you can do to a mayor, or what you can say about a mayor, or what you can say about a police chief, or how you can beat up somebody that's on council, or how you can beat up somebody, focus on getting this fixed. We need help. We need help. And, and it's difficult to look my officers in the face and go back over and tell them everything's gonna be okay. It's not gonna be okay. It's not gonna be okay until we fix it, and we, we have to fix it together. And it's unfortunate that, that the police department seems to take the brunt of, and the fire department as well, takes, takes the brunt of budget cuts whenever it happens, because they're the biggest users of, of funding from the general fund. But when Mark Stuldryer was here, just before he left, he had a meeting with us and he said, you know, the worst thing I did was cut the police department in the city to the extent that I did. It should have never happened. And he looked me in my face and he said, I'm really sorry about that. I got laid off. I was laid off for eighteen months, and then came back part-time, because they lied to us and told us if we didn't come back part-time, we would lose our full-time positions when they were available. So you had officers working fifteen dollars an hour, no medical benefits. And I like, you know, the people at Pratt Plan Moran, they're nice people, but it's doom and gloom all the time. There's never anything positive. Nothing that our treasurer couldn't do or they do, and I'm just saying it, I'm just putting it out there. Nothing that they, they're doing that our treasurer can't do, so let's start with saving that money, but, um, you know, the, the, the level of businesses that want to come to this city are not coming if it's not safe. They're not coming. The mayor has been to, uh, and this isn't a promote Patrick Wimbley, uh, speech, but the mayor has been, I've seen him, I've been there, I've talked to him, I've went with him to talk to business after business after business after business. And their first thing out of their mouth is, are our people going to be safe? So I implore you, I beg you, as your chief of police, as a resident of Grandview Street, right down the street from Shirley Henderson, I beg you, make sure you take every opportunity you can to get this millage passed. Take everything that you can do, use every resource you have, and pass a millage, because next year may not be guaranteed. We, we have to figure out a way to fund this thing. We have to figure it out. We have to. There is no going backwards. That's not an answer. Cutting revenue is, cutting, I mean, cutting, uh, expenditures really, we're almost rock bottom now. There's not much you can cut. You know, we, we've tried, tried to position ourselves, at least in my department, in a situation where we're trying to get accredited. That brings our insurance rates down fifty to sixty percent, puts us in line with best practices across the country, puts us in line with best practices across the state. Nobody can argue in a lawsuit that we don't know what we're doing, we're not trained. We have not been able to do that up to this point. Why? Because every time we get almost to the finish line, right when we get there, the council decides we need to cut funding in the police department, and it puts us right back in the place that we were before. We've got lawyers that come at us and say, oh, you're inadequately supervised. Okay, so we have enough supervision. I got council people saying, you got too much supervision. Okay, well, you want to pay us or you want to pay the lawyers? Um, you have to make a decision here that makes sense. We got people here that are skilled in investigations, to do these investigations that have been ignored for so long. I'm not gonna talk about my predecessors, I'm not gonna talk about them, but I'm gonna tell you that there are things that needed to be changed, that the moment that I became the chief, I could change them, and I have done it. And I'm proud to be the leader of these people that work for me, because they're hard, hard-working people. And before you make a decision that affects their lives, like Jerome Bivens said, you need to think about it. Think about it real carefully, because they're not gonna be here. And who am I gonna fill those positions with? Nobody's coming. You gotta think about this real carefully. I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, alright. Most of you are done, I'm just. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Wiley? No, I'm just, I'm, no, I'm, I'm, I just, I just, I said, Councilwoman Wiley. Did you have anything, ma'am?
You need to talk now, like that? Okay, um, first of all, I have a, uh, a resident, former councilwoman, Ron Johnson, who listens religiously to the council meetings and has numerous complaints. The one that comes to mind is he states that when people come to the podium, they turn their back on the mic, and you can't hear anyway. He would like you all to invest in some hand mics, so that when the people in the audience ask questions, we can hear them, and when the people who are speaking to us, we can hear them, because at last meeting, I guess it was you and the other lady, turned around and addressed the city, and, I mean, the residents, and they could not hear them.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, so that's one of the things.
Okay.
The other thing is, uh, in reference to this police situation, and we keep talking about money, 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 money. Unfortunately, we are not bringing up the positive aspects of being a police officer in this city, which is one day, we have one of the best pensions around. Now, we understand you are hiring young people, and young people care about dollars. They don't really care about benefits and, but this is the thing, when you've worked a while, that you work for. You want that stuff that pays you when you get as old as I do, you know, we don't have to go to work, because we do, we have, Chief, Chief Ober, don't we have a great pension?
We do.
Yes, we do. So that's something that you can use.
Oh, he tell them all the time.
And maybe also, you might want to try hiring mid-range people who are interested in building up that, uh, because I see some money going through here, and I go, they get that much? So, uh, uh, those are the things, we need to start promoting those things that are not necessarily, because look at all those Ford workers who's making great money for years, and now they don't have pensions. So, let's start accentuating the positive, okay? Uh, there was one other thing Ron Johnson said, but he just talked so long. Maybe I'll bring the message he left on my machine to play for y'all.
Oh, he'll call, he'll call you and talk to you all day.
Stop lying.
And, uh, I think that's it.
Alright, ma'am. Councilwoman Washington?
I would just like to say thank you, chief, along with Gina Tripp, living in code enforcement, for fixing the issue that I have brought up many the times on Meadow Lane. We're very grateful. I had, um, residents of Meadow Lane reach out to me. Um, just thank you guys, because they've been dealing with the issue for so long, so I really appreciate you guys dealing with tennis, along with getting the vehicles tagged and removed. So, really appreciate you both. Great job. Thank you so much.
Alright, Councilman Shaw?
This year, I just, I just only have just one, one thing, um, it, it was brought to my attention that, and I think I talked to, talked to you about it as well, uh, the, the, the GFL, the trash. Now, you know, we talked about this before. They had issues concerning that they didn't have enough people, uh, during the COVID time. And that's why they were missing trash, missing, missing, excuse me, missing routes. But I don't understand what can possibly be their excuse now. I mean, they're still missing routes, they're still missing trash. What, I mean, are we, you know, doing anything to enforce that, JB?
Just speak on what we've done. Speak into the mic, please.
We sent a letter to them from our attorney demanding some money from them. Wait on their response, and we're gathering information now to send them a second letter. So we keep a daily run of what they're doing and what they're not doing.
Because we get them every day. And their excuses are the same, you know, no, no people.
Manpower issue, but that's not my problem.
And, and that's what, JB, that's what I was saying before, uh, when we were doing talks with them.
That's any trash company you deal with now. They all have the same issue, but that's not our issue. They have a contract to fulfill. That's how I look at it. I got manpower issues too, but I still got a job to fulfill.
And we're definitely on top of it, so we're keeping up with any time we get, you know, like if you guys send us anything, we make sure we put it into a database. As it relates to missed pickups, how they go, went back and got it, when they went back and got it, and then, of course, in that letter, and we'll, let's just forward that letter to the council.
Okay.
As it relates to that, that way you can see that.
Better make dollars for.
Correct, yes. Ma'am? Please.
Is there any specific area that this is referring to those fifty years, because I don't have any issues with them over on my side. So I'm wondering if this, uh, specific area.
They, they over there too.
The city lot.
Yeah, citywide.
They miss it, they, they miss it, I won't say the streets, on, on Tuesday's route, but they miss the streets.
Well, they do. I'm just saying, because technically, what they were supposed to do is skip our regular day because of the holiday, but they didn't, and they picked up.
Because that's not a holiday, it's on our.
It's not a holiday? Oh.
It's on our, it's on our contract.
But see, that's what everybody believes. If the York trash day falls over the holiday, then you pick up the next day, so people leave their stuff the next day, and it stays old.
But that's why we employ residents to look at the calendar, because the calendar.
Oh, wait a minute, Ron, you're not trying to tell me to ask these people to read the calendar.
Alright.
I, I had a question, I had a question real quick, the fact that you just brought up GFL. I had a, a few residents in, in my community, I'm not sure if other residents complained about this, about the, um, fluids that's left after they actually dump, where there's fluids, like they just drive, you can see it coming down the, uh, roads.
I need you to forward that tomorrow.
Okay.
So we can address it with them.
Alright.
About their trucks, yeah.
We've definitely had that happen.
Their trucks shouldn't be over.
I don't know if that's.
Some hype.
Shouldn't be over five years old.
That too.
Forward that, it's nice that they take pictures forward that.
People always have to say, oh, I don't put out compost, I just put it in the can.
Yep. We need to start finding them though. Okay. Councilwoman Williams?
I have nothing.
Okay, Council.
Yes, I do. Um, missionary of our prediction, we're going to celebrate the, uh, sign, um, hanging up the sign Thursday, four o'clock, on Irene and Carla. Everybody's welcome there. Looking for the mayor to be there to open us up, and be, shouldn't be but a minute. It take long to do that. We happy, we happy that.
Four, four o'clock on Irene and Carla.
Right. We're happy to give her her flowers while she alive.
Alright. Good. Mr. Bivens, you all set for that?
Carla and Irene.
It's Thursday.
Thursday. Four o'clock.
Anything else, sir?
That's it.
Councilman Chisholm?
Yes, thank you. Um, real quick, I had received a robocall this evening on my way to City Hall from Rep. Taleev's office. Not sure if everybody got it, but there's a town, telephone town hall that should be hosted tomorrow evening, I think about six o'clock. Um, and it just says, once you get the call, you can just answer and join. Um, I'm assuming if you didn't get that information, please contact her office if you wish to be on that call to find out what updates. Um, I did have a couple residents who reached out to inquire why a funding email came out for the district, and Inkster wasn't included on there at all. So that's gonna be a prominent question to ask on that town hall, and I'm gonna make sure I let.
You talking about Rashida Taleev, Congresswoman Rashida Taleev? I remember when she had, well, it's kind of like, kind of what Knesic was saying too. You know, they had so many cities to represent, that they gave us so much money when they gave us a two-point-five for the seniors' center. It's like going through the process now. It will be like on a next list from what she was explaining to me.
Okay.
You know, like she basically wanted to give, just like, give you more money so you can do more, you know, do something bigger, you know, grander, if you will, you know? Okay, but I know that that's, you know, something that she explained to me at that time.
It came up, so I just figured I'd mention it here, and then of course, I'll let, you know, those particular residents know as well. Um, real quick, I know the town halls for DPS haven't really been that well-attended. I had posted the flyer multiple times, and then I had people commenting under saying it was not conducive to their likes, or, I'm sorry, their schedule. Um, then they asked about streaming it and things of that nature, and I just know it, it, we're stretching everybody then with that, because you're trying to have Troy here to plan the commission meetings, the city council meetings, and at the town hall meeting at the same time. We just don't have this. I was gonna ask, at the end of the, um, discussions, once they've concluded for this month, if we could just get a summary, hard copy summary, just to send out to them, just so they know what to be aware of?
Okay.
And, uh, boss?
The plans to record the last meeting so we could.
Oh, so you're throwing access channel on YouTube and everything, okay?
Streaming it all, of course.
Thank you. Uh, also, Mr. Mayor, you had implored us to draft letters to our state legislators at the meeting that we have with the state. You said at the last council meeting, and you said it tonight. I did start on mine. Um, I'm late in getting it to them, but I just wanted to let you know I did, and just wanted to reiterate to our colleagues to make sure they get one too, because like we said before, in that meeting, if you don't shake the tree, won't, no apples will fall. And, and Trustee Lawana Abney Mitchell had asked for an announcement to be made that New Jerusalem Church will be having a free clothing closet on Saturday, June twenty-fourth. That will be from twelve PM to three PM, three PM, and I believe that's going to be at New Jerusalem Church on Inkster Road. And the last thing, just kind of piggybacking on the support that the fire department and the police department needs. I know, I know we don't necessarily have a volunteer department with the fire department like other communities do, but we do ha- have auxiliary, and we do have some pretty capable people in the community who just choose not to utilize their free time in the capacity in which they could. Um, therefore, I would just implore those who are able-bodied and interested to perhaps reach out to the fire department and ask what you can do, or join the auxiliary, um, portion of that and give some of your time. Uh, it's something that I've considered in the past, and, oh, crap, my laptop just died, but I'm just gonna say this and close out. Oh, here it is. In the, to paraphrase what the late President John F. Kennedy said, Inkster, ask not what you can do for your community, but ask what you, ah! So that wrong. Ask what you can do for your community. I missed that, uh, thanks to technology. Everybody have a great night.
I just have a couple of things to say. When, um, when I made that statement today in regards to our budget, first of all, when we was in the consent agreement and union workers, because I'm a union worker too, we didn't have no say-so because of the consent agreement. So now I'm thinking, uh, we need to just show something. First of all, union negotiations is different. But we was in a consent agreement, so we didn't have no control over that. So in order for you guys to have, even have a pay cut, they would have to go to your, your union and negotiate. I was not talking about you, you guys, first of all. And my councilwoman, Wiley, said Ford pays a lot of, uh, what am I trying to say?
Money.
Money, but new employees don't get that anymore. It's just the late, the old employees, but I just want to let you know that. And I'm gonna let you guys know that Ford Motor Company took a pay cut. Everyone did. Years ago, fifteen, sixteen years ago, they have not got a raise. The legacy have not got a raise in fifteen, sixteen years. That's why this union person is trying to fight, and we may strike. So let me lay that there. They did take, they did take a pay cut to save the company. So it's nothing wrong with that if you do it in the right manner, but as we, as a councilperson, if we did not have Democrat in the House and the Senate, guess where we would be back in? We'd be back in that consent agreement. So if we initially take a ten percent pay cut or five percent to help us, five percent or whatever, do whatever we have to. But if we ain't showing no signs or trying to do anything, who's gonna help us? That's what I'm saying. And it's hard, five percent is hard. And it's hard, five percent is hard as fire, but we have to initiate something. Even gross point, they going through contract, they going through talks now about this school. They don't wanna do it, but they gotta do something to save it. So it's not my mind mentality to just cut, but if we don't do something, we not gonna save this. And that's all I was saying. So you take it however you wanna take it, but I don't wanna see anybody taking a pay cut. But at the end of the day, if you don't have no money to pay your employees, what you gonna do? And Jerome's department is stretched thin, what, capital outlay? If we have to one day, and I've never had this happen while I've been on council, have to borrow from them. So now if we have to borrow from them 'cause we don't have no money, what is that saying? We got to do something, that's all I was saying. Okay, I yield.
All right, motion to adjourn.
I have one more question.
Ma'am.
In reference to what, um, Councilwoman Chisholm was saying about, you know, auxiliary things of that nature, the Westland School District has, uh, a fire program that they had, uh, young graduates graduate from. And they're looking for, you know, situations or things of that nature. I don't know about the police, but, uh, if you got Luana Abdi Mitchell, she's one of the, um, she's one of the commissioners on the Westland School Board, maybe you can get some summer up or something.
Well, she, she was here at the last council meeting, she talked to me, and I told her she had people that had fire one and two in the E M T, they can get in today.
Oh, okay.
I hadn't heard of her since then.
But I, I have the, um, a booklet, 'cause my daughter teaches at Westland, so I'm just saying, that's something, you know? But since they're looking for different things to do.
Mm-hmm. We'll just make sure we get back with her, follow, matter of fact, I'll just touch you with John Digley. The superintendent.
That's it.
She watching live.
Okay, yeah, we'll get the superintendent on that for you, okay? All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved, Chair.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, let's go.
Say nay and stay.